Hi Dan.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Eric, I'm gonna let, there's other people coming in too.
Can you, can you make me a co-host?
I will, just one second, let me get everybody in first.
Awesome, where's Jim? Can him out access?
Alright, let's see here now. There you go, Dan.
Thank you so much.
You are welcome. And I'm going to drink coffee and smoke a cigarette while we're waiting.
Sorry about that. Always happens, there's always at least one glitch. Welcome to the Southwest Vermont Regional Technical School Board Candidate Forum. Excited to have you all here today. My name is Dan Fingus. I am the Organizing Director for Rights and Democracy in Vermont. I am going to give you a few tech-related announcements before I turn it over to our moderator for the evening, Mia Schultz. Just so everyone knows, we are recording this. Both RAD is recording this to post up on our social media page, and Cat TV is recording this to play later on Cat TV. Thank you Cat TV for being here. If you don't want your picture to be on the recording, and it may be, it may not be, you can just turn your camera off if you don't want to be seen on the recording. I will be, we'll be muting everyone as, if anyone is doing, you know, background noise. We'll try to keep everyone except for the moderator and candidates who are speaking muted, so that way we can have as little background noise as possible. And if you have any tech issues or questions, you can direct message Annie Schwartz Tech Help in the chat function, and she can try to help you out. Also, we'll be taking audience questions today in the chat. So as you think of questions for these great candidates, you can just throw them in the chat, and it'll be putting them in a document for Mia to help ask audience questions later on. And with those fun and exciting tech questions, or tech announcements done, I will now turn it over to the moderator of this program. Well-known Bennington local, amazing activist and leader, leader of the Rutland Area NAACP and member and leader of Rights and Democracy, Mia Schultz.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Wow, what an intro. Thank you. Hold on, I'm doing a little technical stuff now, because of course. Alright, well, good evening and welcome. And thank you for joining us this evening. I am Mia Schultz, as Dan said. And assisting me today with technology and, and the program in general is Dan Fingus from the Vermont State Organizing Director from Rights and Democracy, who was just speaking, and Annie Schwartz from Rights and Democracy Communications Manager, who will be monitoring the chat and helping the audience with questions. Rights and Democracy is a bi-state organization that is member-led and member-funded. Rights and Democracy conducts educational outreach around issues that affect everyday Vermonters. RAD is currently organizing around climate justice, specifically weatherization advocacy, food justice, and is organizing parents to support and strengthen Vermont's public schools. RAD is partnering with the Vermont NEA to raise awareness around educational justice issues. There is a growing support among legislative, fiscal, and education leaders of moving away from property taxes to fund education and moving to income tax, which would be more equitable for low and moderate income Vermonters, and simpler for everyone to understand the system. Together, RAD and the Vermont NEA are organizing parents around advancing the community school model, sorry, community school model, as a strategy to improve educational and equity outcomes, provide increased opportunities for students, and prepare young people for success in life as responsible citizens. Tonight's forum features school board candidate introductions, a moderated question and answer period during which candidates will have one minute to respond, and there will be time for questions from the audience. Please write your audience, your question in the chat, and that will be monitored during the forum. All candidates running for seats on the Southwest Vermont Regional Tech School Board were invited to participate this evening. Tonight, we will hear from six of the nine of them. The Southwest Vermont Regional Tech Board has, I'm not, I'm not sure how many members right now, but there are currently four spots up for election, and we're excited to hear from the six of the nine here tonight on the ballot. Let's meet each candidate. Each candidate has one minute to introduce themselves and share why they're running for the school board. Dan will let you know when you've reached your one minute, so please be mindful of time. Jamar, let's start with you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jamar Vivens. I'm a 33-year-old African-American male here in Bennington, Vermont. I've lived here for the last five years. And I've seen a lot of highs and lows in the town. And so, last year, given all the events that happened last year, I got involved in a lot of listening groups, and I had an opportunity to participate in one of the town's committee boards for policy advisory groups. And so that was an excellent opportunity for me to get some experience in terms of, you know, how the policies and things like that work in our public offices. I chose this opportunity to run because I wanted to be more of a productive member in my community, given all the things that have gone on, and I believe that I have a lot of support.
Okay, great, thank you, Jamar. Michael Cutler, you're up next.
Thank you. I, I'm Mike Cutler. Born and raised here in Bennington and currently work at Cat TV as the production manager. So during my time there, I've covered a fair share of select boards and school board meetings. So seeing the ins and outs is, from that perspective, is nice to learn. But I'm really excited to be here. I've gone to MAU, I've been part of CDC, which is the Southwest Tech now, taking classes there. So I really formed a connection and bond to that institution. So I'm really excited to finally step on a board, hopefully, and give back and help the students and the staff as, be as successful as they can. So, thank you.
Asher, sorry.
Hello there, everyone. My name is Asher Edelson. I'm a proud resident of Bennington County, and I'm so happy to be here with y'all tonight. I want to first of all, thank Rights and Democracy for hosting this wonderful candidate forum, and reiterate the fact that I am proud to be here. I wear many hats in this community. I am a member of the State Rehabilitation Council for the state of Vermont overseeing a wide array of disability issues relevant to all of those who call Vermont home. I work as a residential counselor for a local subacute program, wherein I help marginalized children to better cope with the world around them and keep them safe. I have experience not only in campaigning and politics, but also in activism. Whether that's for people who have disabilities like myself, you'll be able to tell that I have Tourette's Syndrome throughout the entirety of this forum. So I have that perspective as a student, well, a former student with a disability. Furthermore, I have spent my life listening, learning, and advocating for communities that I do not belong to. So I am very happy to announce that not only am I excited to be a candidate for the Southwest Tech Board, but I'm excited to hear questions from you, the audience, because whether you live in Bennington County or somewhere else, you might very well have a student going to this school. This race matters, your voices matter. And I want to thank each and every one of you for being a part of this with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Asher. Jackie. Oh, you're on mute, Jackie. Jackie Kelly.
So sorry. Hello, everyone. I'm Jackie Kelly, and I've lived in Bennington now for 11 years. Before that, I lived overseas for 32 years. I've taught in places such as the Navajo Indian Reservation. I've taught in the city of New York. I've taught down in Peoria, Illinois, kind of all over the United States. And then I went overseas for 30 years. I believe in education. I believe that every child can, can get educated. Every child can learn. And I believe in that a society needs to favor each child. Each child is special. There's, there's no unspecial children. And we take children from where they are up to where they can become. And I enjoy, of course, teaching because I've dedicated my whole life to it. And I enjoy the tech center. I've been on their board now for eight years. And I enjoy them because my second, no, my third degree was in technology, and I did that in 1988, before a lot of people were into tech. And I just think it enhances everyone. I myself have some disabilities, and, and that's what tech did for me. It took me above and beyond. It, it allows you to take the normal and create a better normal. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Jackie. Next, we have Niana Rose, also on the ballot as Joshua Reed. Niana?
Hello, my name is Niana Rose. I am a 26-year-old transgender woman who was born and raised here in Bennington and have lived here for most of my life. I am excited by the prospect of serving my community in this capacity because I have attended Southwest Tech in the past, within the past 10 years. And that practical experience gives me a good understanding of what students go through on a day-to-day basis, and also a good understanding of what marginalized students go through on a day-to-day basis. So I hope to serve my community in any capacity that I can capable of. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Niana. Next is TJ Williams, also on the ballot as Anthony TJ Williams.
I can hear me? Okay, oh yeah, somebody's Anthony Williams. Not used to the Zoom meeting, so just bear with me for a moment. Lifelong resident. In the past, I've worked as an employment consultant with bulk rehab, assisting individuals with disabilities and barriers to employment, gain of skills, and employment. You got that?
We're having a little bit of a feedback issue.
I think we need to mute somebody?
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Can you move your phone away from your, your computer if it's near it? That may help. Not quite.
It's, I think it's Leslie Jacobson's second line that is creating that. That one's not muted. Gotcha.
Should be, should be gone now. Sorry, Leslie, your, your second persona is gone out of the meeting now.
Take two?
Please, yeah, take two.
Take two. Alright, so once again, Anthony Williams, lifelong resident Bennington County, graduated Mount Anthony as well. My professional capacity, I'm self-employed business owner as of 2018. But prior to that, I worked as an employment consultant with bulk rehab, assisting people with disabilities and barriers to employment, gain skills and employment in our community. With the same company, I also worked with the Department of Corrections for about a year and a half assisting individuals transitioning back into the community that had criminal records. And I, I believe both positions are pretty successful overall. And prior to that, I actually worked at Brock Community Action as a job readiness coordinator. Again, so it just helped people gain skills that make them better employees and better community members. And I really hope to bring that perspective to the board as well, just being able to look at the whole picture of an individual and realize it's not just one service usually that gets them back on their feet. It's multiple services coming together to make that happen. You know, has the community portion of, of this conversation. So that's what I'm about, getting people skills and employed and back on their feet, making our community a better place.
Thank you, TJ. So this next portion of our, of our forum is a moderated question-answer. There will also be one minute to respond. There, that'll be six minutes per question, you know, per person. So I'll get started with that. And what, here's the question, we're going to put it up on the screen, there we go. What experience would you bring to the role of school board member that you would feel, that you feel would benefit the students of your district? What experience would you bring to the role of school board member that you feel would be, would benefit the students of this district? Michael Cutler, please, your first step.
Thank you. Experience, I think I would bring, as a couple of people mentioned, I've gone through this school itself, so having that perspective of what the students can go through, the variety of classes they can take. But also feel like I want to be approachable. I am an approachable person. I'm very charismatic. I love to hear all sides of the story and, you know, kind of help people as best out as I can. So I think, you know, just that experience of trying to relate to people. And if I don't know the answer, I want to point them in the direction of someone who does know the answer so that they can have the, going forward, the best education they can get at Southwest Tech.
Okay, Asher, you're next.
In addition to knowing the struggles of a student with a disability, and I know that many of the students in the Southwest Tech have a disability, visible or invisible. I also have a multitude of experience surrounding education issues. In 2014, I ran for a different school board to advocate for healthier foods and parent-teacher conferences that were equitable and accessible to parents and teachers alike. I do believe in being a good listener, and I encourage anyone out there with concerns with experience to reach out to me because I want to hear your struggle, I want to hear your experience. Because largely, in order to make any board, whether it's the Southwest Tech Board or any other governmental body better, we need to hear from the people. So yes, public comment at meetings, that is so important. We need to hear from the people as to what issues are vital. Whether that revolves around the equity of students who have disabilities, come from impoverished communities, or LGBT, or people of color. We need to hear from you. Whether it's regarding accountability, we need to ensure that public officials are all accountable, and we need to make sure that we're all listening. Furthermore, my experience ranges from working on campaigns to working with children in a residential subacute setting, to being someone who can talk with fellow Americans, whether they're conservative or liberal.
Retractor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Asher. Jackie Kelly, you're up next. Did you want me to read, read the question? You're on mute.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, what I bring to the board is eight years of knowledge of how the board has been working. Not that they should be working the same way every year, but we've gone from a board that had students in school and adults after school to a board now that envisions a whole different type of, of education. And, and that is the vision of how the, the needs of the community should be served. And one of this, is one of these is six, we've developed six certifications now. For instance, like CDL certification, LNN certified certifications. These certifications are well-needed in our community. And so, instead of just having, you know, let's make a cake type of classes, we now are serving the community much better, in my perspective. The other thing that I bring to the board is a knowledge of curriculum. I have a doctorate in curriculum and instruction. I know students well, I know what will work for them. The other thing that I bring to the board is a deep appreciation of, of all the different types of kids that we have, the ones who are motivated to do rather than just to look at a book and learn. We encourage everybody to learn, but some kids learn differently, a lot differently than others.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie. Niana Rose, you're up next.
I feel as if that, what I bring as far as experience has already been more or less stated, a lived experience, having been a student at the school in recent years, recent-ish. I understand what it can be like to go through these courses, with the value of these types of education. I still am in contact with several people who are my classmates, who some went on to do animation from video production, and others went on to work in theater and other projects. The practical experience from a lot of these other courses cannot be stressed enough. Very, very important that we have a perspective from multiple people who have a good understanding of, of why this is necessary for our community.
Thank you, Niana. TJ, TJ Williams, you're next.
Sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing people. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you hear me okay?
I can't, but I'm gonna go for it anyways.
Do you need me to redo the question for you?
I'm not sure what's going on. I'm just gonna, there you go, I can hear now.
Okay, would you like me to reread the question for you?
Uh, no, it's pretty much my experience and my vision for the board, correct?
Sure, yeah.
Alright, so my experience has been of, of what I already mentioned. I have over 10 years, or close there are, working with high-needs individuals and high-functioning individuals and gaining employment in the community. And I have a broad understanding of what skill sets employers are looking for, and it is a broad idea of what's coming up in the future. You know, so really trying to stay ahead of the curve here as far as education goes for not only our young people, but the community so they can access these skills and trades right here locally. And I, I just have a way, just seeing a big picture. You know, I want to be able to reach out and, and make sure people have access to this tech center as much as possible. And also, hopefully build the skills of the future. You know, we need to develop more critical thinkers, people that can really pivot if they need to, whether it be industry or income-wise, and then, and kind of go from there. So just be able to have that broad picture of what's needed in our community and make sure our community has access to it.
Thank you, TJ. Jamar?
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So what I would bring as far as my role with experience, I've been a student here at the local community college of Vermont for the, a duration of a couple of years, and I've attended several universities prior to that. So as a student, I would be able to emphasize with any struggles and concerns that they would have regarding their education. As a person from a leadership position, I've had the opportunity to be in leadership roles during my time in the military. So I believe that I would bring that sense of a guide forward to the board. I also believe that we need more people in the community in general that care about people to, to want to be able to work with other people regardless of what their political beliefs is, regardless of what their gender be, how they identify themselves. Those things should matter in, in groups where we need to discuss things that benefit the community and the people.
Thank you, Jamar. Our second question. South, Southwest Vermont Regional Tech has a specific mission around career readiness, skill-building, and adult education. Why is that vision important? And how do you see your role in, in continuing and supporting that vision? Asher, you're first.
The magic that happens at the Southwest Tech is so important because it provides the kids here and also adults here with an opportunity aside from college because as we all know, it can be a tough world out there. Having trades available for people to learn matters so much, whether it's forestry, theater, pre-law, law enforcement, nursing, whatever it might be. I believe that these things are the cornerstone of the continuation of education from grade school to further out in life. Furthermore, I believe that we should not only appreciate what already is offered at Southwest Tech, but look at expanding. I for one believe that there should be an agricultural program at the Southwest Tech, and I know that there was already an agricultural program. So I would like to see the return of that program as well as strengthening the others and bringing more kids from across the county in, that way they can share in the magic too.
Thank you, Asher. Jackie Kelly, you're next.
I'm not muted this time. I just think that everybody is unique. And, and because of their uniqueness, we need to develop curriculums and places for kids to study which meet their needs and not just the, the, the so-called ice bucket needs. And, and we need to put them out there and allow them to communicate with, with authentic types of learning situations to, to, to get in, right now, the, we have this machine where kids can go drive a truck, but they don't have to be in a truck. So it simulates the, the CDL's requirements and allows them to get a feel of things without destroying the whole neighborhood. And I love that. And to test your abilities in, in things that you've never, never experienced before, you know, getting into an auto mechanics class, okay?
Thank you, Jackie. Next up, Niana?
Well, I think that the very obvious value of this type of education is that it creates a skilled labor force, a continuing skilled labor force. And as we all know, Vermont has more young people leaving than staying or making sure that there are still opportunities for them to stay and have good jobs. or making sure that there are still opportunities for them to uh stay and have good jobs. Um, and and a good understanding of how those jobs work before they do them. Uh, it's, it can be really vital to young people's education and adult education um to have access to these things.
Thank you, Niana. TJ, oh wait, yes, I was right.
Alright, uh so yeah, I I think um we should really focus on the vision of of what the Southwest Tech Center is is has been leaning towards, and that's 21st century training. And the CL uh training is a good example of that, that's for sure. But we gotta continue to keep moving in that direction. And I think that in the south is gonna excite kids to come over and and take part in the crit and in the tech tech center, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm just calling the CDC still, the Southwest Technical Center. And even bringing in maybe even some STEAM classes or or curriculum where they focus on science, technology, um engineering, arts, and math, you know, try to encompass programs that are gonna stimulate all parts of uh all sorts parts of people's brains and learning abilities and make them critical thinkers and make them want to go out and explore these things on their own. I think that's the secret, you just plant that seed where someone goes out there and wants to learn more on their own and then bring that those skills back to the classroom and share with everybody along with what they're learning hands-on. I think that's the key, uh critical thinkers and lifelong learners.
Thank you, Anthony, or TJ. Okay, Jamar, you're up next.
Okay, so um I personally approve of the mission statement. Took a look at it earlier and uh I like the idea of allowing students to explore both options. Being able to come to the uh CDC, I guess, um what it's originally called. I'm gonna just call it that because I'm I'm not used to the the southern, the that name, sorry. Um, but having students come there and being able to go elsewhere to also attain degree, I think that is a valuable option for people to have. It it guarantees someone that, you know, you'll have a solid chance to get a job somewhere. And if not a job, you have a skill set that you could use to create business for yourself. So uh I like that option. I think that we should also look at expanding options like uh possibly language interpreters. I think that's a a skill set that doesn't really get a lot of uh credence. And so we we should look at expanding things like that. You know, I like the programs that they have there at the uh at the CDC, but I do believe that we could possibly look at options of possibly expanding on those. To include more skills, the
Thank you, Jamar, thank you. Next, Michael.
Um, I'll take it from a perspective of personal experience. I uh was my sophomore year, fell in love with theater. I took that class at the CDC for the last three years of high school. Thought it was what I want to do as a career, learned that that's uh you're a you're a small fish in an ocean for that, but fell in love with video productions my senior year and the experience in the class of just all the expertise of the video production, the theater arts really led me to be ready to continue my education at college, but also have a foot up on many people when I entered my film uh my bachelor's degree for film. And um having those classes at Southwest Tech helped me. And also the addition of going on Skills USA, which is a statewide and national level competition that is available to students at Southwest Tech, so that also is another way for students to learn career readiness at a competition level, learning, adjusting, making mistakes, because that's all part of learning, and fixing those mistakes so that they are ready for their career or their college education like I was, so. And here today, I'm still in the video and theater world uh as careers, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. For our third question. How can you, as a Southwest Vermont Regional Technical School Board member, push for a more inclusive atmosphere at the schools and make sure that the diversity of students is respected and supported? I will start with Jackie Kelly for that question.
Thank you, Mia. Well, in order to do that, we we need to develop the individual person. We need to find out what their needs are, what their outlook is, give them enough experiences to let them choose. You know, if we never, if we never got into uh tech, then then we need to, you know, just try a little bit. If we never got into theater or uh movies, uh try a little bit of it. Because in in today's society, we'll need to know a lot of tech uh as adults. And uh uh many teachers will say, oh, I'm not gonna do this, let the kid do it because they're they're more adept at this, but it's only because they've they've learned it. And uh certainly after this pandemic uh is over, uh we will all know a lot more tech than we we knew before. But uh we have to look at the individual, their needs and their divul- their diverse, excuse me, their diverse culture, their social and uh ethical needs. We each come to the table different, and none of us are the same. And so we have to take an individual as they are, provide them with the uh sort of a smorgasbord of of learning that they can adapt to. And and it it's interesting that the research tells us that once, once a student figures out how to do this one thing well, other things come into line. And it's it's it's, I've seen it over and over, okay?
Thank you, Jackie. Niana Rose?
Yeah, I think that uh the most important thing uh as far as making sure that the atmosphere that um people are learning is in is inclusive in every way is to first of all, listen to students and their concerns and their complaints um and make sure that those are addressed properly and that um there is accountability for for mistakes and um abuse uh that a lot of time people from marginalized communities face. Um, making sure that there are consequences for actions is of the utmost importance, especially in such a polarizing time politically. Um, and making sure that uh people who are from marginalized communities feel uh safe is ensuring their ability to learn in these environments.
Thank you, Niana. TJ?
Okay, so inclusion and diversity. We may just have to rethink about how we structure our our classes a little bit, just, you know, what topics we cover. There's nothing wrong with we're bringing up touchy subjects in the beginning of a class, just to kind of put them out there, whether that be about inclusion or or uh what this thing, you know, privilege may look like for some people or lack thereof, and just getting the different idea what frame of reference people bring to the table, because like you said, everyone's different. Uh, everyone experiences things differently and 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 so forth, but um the diversity is not a tricky thing, we're all diverse, it's just being accepting of of our differences and being able to talk about them as a whole and try different things. Um, I think Ja- Jackie Kelly was talking about the cake decorating, I actually took that class, I had a good time with that. You know, people look at me and go, I I don't think he would take a cake decorating class, but I did, I had a good time with that, and it was fun, and it was creative. And uh you bring that home, you share that with your family, and you you kind of pa- pass pay it forward, um so just pay forward, inclusion, and um and just be accepting of others. And try to make the classes work for people with disabilities um opposed to not. Yeah, there are some prerequisites that I saw, and many of the um courses offered that may be very difficult for people to be able to go through these classes, so just think about that and how we can assist them to make it through.
Thank you, TJ. Jamar, you're next.
Okay. What's going on?
Someone was unmuted for a second, Jamar, that's all, you can go, you can start again.
Okay, sorry about that. Well, I I think it starts largely with representation. You you want people, especially on these particular boards, that again, as we are saying, are accepting of others. These kind of these places aren't any it's not the kind of atmosphere that you want to have, the kind of hateful rhetoric that we've seen over the summer of last year. Um, I I believe that created a a large outcry, it it uh it kind of damaged the integrity of the school board in a to a degree, and so we don't need that, you know, we want people to be um held accountable for their actions. We want people to uh be free, you know, and and not impugn their their rights of free speech in any way. But uh we we also want foster environments where people want to come to work and 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 not feel as if they're being uh I don't know, for lack of a better word, I guess, having prejudice against them.
Thank you, Jamar. Michael, you're next.
I feel like everyone's uh covered this really well, but I'll I'll just add a few things. Um, I think it really, as everyone said, the board and the staff need to be welcoming to all walks of life and listen to all opinions, whether they're popular or unpopular, new or old. Um, you know, I think if we all work together, we thrive together, and that's at the board level, at the staff level, at the student level, you know, treating students, students need to treat people with respect, whether that's to the teacher or other students, and obviously if that doesn't happen, there are consequences for that. And I think, you know, in addition to the classes these students take, we're also shaping them into good citizens that go out into the world to school or to jobs and and go out into the world and be happy, successful people, so it starts at school to be kind to all, so.
Asher, thank you, Michael. Asher, you're next.
As your Southwest Tech Board Member, I will advocate for mandatory equity training, not just for teachers, but also for board members. We need to be very conscious of the struggles of marginalized communities, ensuring that teachers have the knowledge to, for example, address trans students with their preferred pronouns. To understand a child with a disability's struggles, to understand where a a child from a community of color or impoverished community might be coming from. We need to ensure that um educators are continuing and taking seriously the role of IEP in 504 meetings, so that way everyone's on the same page regarding uh students with disabilities, as a matter of fact, many kids at the Southwest Tech School have disabilities something to the tune of twenty-two percent, if not more. Furthermore, I do believe in the power of listening. As Niana said, we need to have people issue complaints when things aren't going well, because as board members, we only know so much and we only have access to so much. So I hope to hear from the community now and always. And I believe very strongly that direct actions will need to be taken, not only so that board members are held accountable for creating an inclusive environment, but teachers as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Asher. So for our next question. There is a proposal in the state legislature, legislature, to move public school funding from property tax to income. The Tax Commission and the Vermont School Boards Association believe this reform is a more equitable way of funding public education. Do you support moving from a property tax to an income tax to fund public education? Let's start with Niana.
Uh, yes, uh absolutely. One thing that I have personally researched into to this as an issue is understanding that people from lower-income neighborhoods and people from areas with lower property values are losing out significantly on uh getting a a proper education with the proper funding. And um a lot of that is because of uh low housing low housing costs and uh a a big part of the way we can change that is to move to income tax and sales tax so that we can uh more equitably provide an education for everybody.
Thank you, Niana. TJ, you're next.
So my answer is gonna be uh yes, yes, and yes. And the reason is, there's a lot of rentals uh in town that don't pay taxes uh on in the property they live on, they just pay rent. And because of that, it it kicks back down to the property owners to pay local school tax, which many of the seniors in our community don't have kids in the school system anymore, or maybe never did. And what happens year after year is that property taxes keep going up because of school costs and and others, other costs as well, um municipalities and all that. But if we move to an income base, I think we see a dramatic shift in revenue, uh for sure. I think that's a great proposal, I don't know what took so long, and I can't wait to see it passed, and that's where I stand on that one.
Thank you, TJ. Mike, you're next.
Uh, yes, it'd be easy to say this, yes, do support this. I haven't seen it discussed too much at the local level, but having covered many, many, many school board budget meetings, it's extremely complicated to watch the formula that, I I mean, I'm amazed at how they do it, but the formula of the per equalized pupil spending, and it comes from this and the state income and the all the numbers, so I think it would make it easier, as everyone stated. Uh, I also think that Southwest Tech is at uh an advantage of their budget because it's spread over a greater region of more people, more towns than just uh banked improper, so uh that also helps the burden as well, but I think this would be a good move, so, yes.
Thank you, Mike. Um, Asher, you're next up.
As eager as I am to answer this question, I wasn't Jamar up after after TJ? No? Okay, well, in that case, I will say that I have a multitude of opinions on taxation as an issue. I will say that I do support that move, I think it is very important that we look at budgeting as a key proponent, uh key component rather, of being a board member and figuring out how are we going to energize our programs, bring in new programs, and ensure that there is a level playing field, so yes, I do support that change, without a doubt.
Asher, thank you, you were right. Jamar, I apologize. You were next, so I will put it to you, thank you, Jamar, thank you, Asher.
That's okay. Um, I also support the budget. Based on the results that we've seen, the fact if, you know, at at um bigger areas, we know that this would definitely help people of the uh lower-income families. And and so, most of the guys have already touched on most of the important details anyway regarding um how it would uh better benefit being covered over a larger area from um you know, property owners not even paying their taxes and things like that, so I won't touch in those things. But uh I I definitely support budget.
Thank you, Jamar. Uh, Jackie?
Thank you. Uh, yes, I support it wholeheartedly, and and I've been advocating it for at least four years that I know of. And the reason I do that is because it's more equitable. It's more equitable for the seniors in town, uh you know, who have many of them have paid off their houses and and but their taxes keep going up every year and i- it's become unaffordable, and so um it it would help especially the seniors. The the other th- reason I I look at it is, and I I would like all teachers in the state to get the same salary or be on the same salary scale. This would make uh our classes and and our schools more equitable as well. We have a very low uh salaries for the teachers in this town, and because of that And because of that, many of them leave to go to other towns which pay more. But if everybody in the state had the same amount of money, they could stay, you know, relatively near where, where, uh, their, uh, families are and not have to move and become the great teachers that they are. But, uh, equity is about, equity in school is about, uh, affording the best teachers that you can. So should all those best teachers go up to, uh, uh, north? No, they, some of the, they should really stay here and, and, and be, okay?
Thank you, Jackie. So we're ready for our next question. How do you see yourself responding when the needs of your school district or the stances of your fellow board members conflict with your own opinions? Uh, TJ, we'll start with you.
Responding during conflict, uh, just really just get a, get an idea of where they're coming from. Um, if you don't really understand or disagree, you just have to ask more questions and dive in a little more and get an idea of how they're viewing the issue, uh, differently from yourself and see if there is some common ground you can agree on first and, and build from there. Um, or not, or maybe just have a, agreed upon having this different opinion on something and, and that's fine. And sometimes you may get, uh, overvoted or, or just be the lone person in that, in that area, um, with that viewpoint. But, uh, that's not a bad thing, uh, being able to have different viewpoints and not always agree isn't a bad thing. But again, find the common grounds. We're here for one purpose and that's to serve the community, serve, um, the Southwest Tech Board and make it the best place we can. So that's my main focus, conflict or not.
Thank you, TJ. Um, Jamar, I didn't skip you this time. Gotcha. You're up next.
Thank you. So me personally, um, I like to listen to all people's opinions regardless of whether I disagree or agree. So I see myself being able to, to work with any individual regardless of how they feel about me and, and under any circumstances. And, and I think you, you have to, one, want the ability and have the ability to be able to work with others, um, regardless of what they believe in, regardless of how they look, uh, regardless of what the gender is. Um, agree or disagree, you know? Anthony said it, our job is to ensure that we create a, uh, environment where we can communicate effectively with the community and the staff of, uh, C E C.
Great. Michael, Mike?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm a pretty easygoing guy, so I don't really like conflict. I like to, as, as, as Anthony and Jamar just said, you know, let's talk it out, work our way to the middle, um, on the certain issues, of course, like everyone has said, we're all here to support the superintendent, the staff and the students to be as successful as they possibly can. And, you know, if, if disagreeing on that success is the thing, then that's not right. You know, if, if we all agree on the successful part, that's why we're, we're here to serve, uh, the, um, the students of Southwest Tech. So we'll, we'll, we'll obviously have conflict along the way and, and, you know, it's, it's, it's just dealing with it, being respectful of one another and finding that, that's common ground to work out that resolution.
Thank you, Mike. Asher?
Oh darn, you just missed Frodo. My cat was just here on my lap.
I saw him.
He's a little cutie. All right. So I believe in earnesty and dialogue. Both are so important. We need to be able to disagree without being disagreeable and that is one of the tenants of my campaign is to be able to do that, to look you in the eye and say, I agree with you, but I'm going to agree to disagree or I disagree with you, but I'm going to do it in a civil way. Now look, politics is polarized nowadays, maybe more so than it's been in a long time and town drama does not help. So I believe that we need to be able to have a dialogue where yes, we can come to a compromise, we can come to a consensus. We also need to be able to have the boldness to say, okay, this is what I believe. I disagree with you, but I'm not going to tell you something that you want to hear just to trick you into a vote or just to trick you into this or that. I believe in shooting from the hip and making sure that we are all on the same page, agree or disagree. And you know what? I have a multitude of different people, conservative, liberal, whatever it is on my page and in my friend group who I interact with and we get along just fine. And I aim to be, uh, a voice for civility on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Asher. Jackie, you are next.
Yes, um, agree to disagree is, uh, a compromise at best. And I think we all need to compromise on, on some issues, not all issues. Uh, what we are doing on a board is serving students. We're not serving the needs of, of a particular board member, uh, or, you know, even, even a superintendent. We're looking at the best things that are possible for students. I always looked at that as a teacher and I will continue to look that way, uh, to serve the needs of those students uh, and who they are and what they could become. Um, and, uh, there, there are ways to, uh, settle conflicts and, uh, I haven't come across many on our board, but recently there have been more than, than it's needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Niana?
Uh, yeah, I, I think it's, it's very important, uh, to say, uh, right off that, um, you know, a, as a board, we only function as a board, our, our, uh, opinions don't necessarily matter, our decisions do as a complete board. And, um, uh, addressing those decisions and any disagreements, uh, comes with uh, attempting to compromise without, uh, compromising the vision of the community or, uh, our own personal values. So it's definitely about compromise, but also about listening and, uh, understanding where everybody's coming from and trying to come to a decision, uh, that reflects the values and the needs of the community.
Thank you, Niana. We have one more question. What do you see as the biggest challenge the school district faces right now? And how would you adjust, uh, address that? What do you see as the biggest challenge and how would you address that? Uh, let's start with Jamar.
Oh, I, I know one of the trendy topics lately has been whether or not we should allow police in the schools. Um, I, I, I personally got some mixed opinions about that. I'm not necessarily for it or against it. I'm kind of on the fence. Um, but I, I think that that is dialogue that needs to be opened up more. Um, we talked about budgeting kind of a little bit. Also, uh, I believe policies, given, you know, what happened here in town over summer, policies that, uh, have actual consequences for, um, hateful behavior, I guess, you know, that, that just discourages people to not want to come to your, your, uh, your program.
Thank you, Jamar. Mike, you're up next.
Uh, gosh, I, I think it's enrollment. Um, you need the enrollment because if you don't have the kids, you can't have the classes. So I think, you know, looking to that, and I think the silver lining of the pandemic has been this virtual learning. However, it's been cumbersome, but I think in the tech world, it would be great if students from Manchester, Dorset or Sandgate could just hop into a Zoom call and hop into the class versus having to drive the 30 minutes, the 40 minutes down to the tech center for the class, drive back. Um, I think that would be a way to make things easier for students in the future. And obviously not all classes can be remoted into, so you got to work and figure out how that works with, with the class schedule. But I think the biggest thing is enrollment, how are we reaching students at those younger ages in the middle school to think about? Do you want these career, um, opportunities? Do you, are you interested in these type of classes? You know, obviously as Asher said, expanding the agricultural class and things, you know, how can we expand when we have or think we have the numbers that would be interested for that class to make it successful? So I think enrollment is the big one going forward.
Thank you, Mike. Asher, you're up next.
So enrollment is definitely an important issue. As your Southwest Tech Board member, I will do what I can with my work schedule being what it is to be present at as, at as many meetings and events as possible. To be there one-on-one when COVID is over, to let students know, take courses, enroll early. Also, the COVID pandemic presents with us with a lot of difficulties, which I'm willing to listen and learn on how we can appropriately address those. So in addition to those things and addressing the ever, uh, the, the always, the, the need for equity, which never changes, I want to ask a question by show of hands, who here knew or knows that each, uh, Southwest Tech Board Member gets a thousand years, uh, a thousand dollars a year in stipend? I didn't know it before our Southwest Tech Board meeting. We need to address accountability and that goes without saying for not just Southwest Tech, but for any governmental institution. We need to ensure that there are measures in place for when board members miss two or three meetings or so. And provided they have a good reason, communicate it with the community, communicate it with the fellow board. We need to ensure that accountability is real. We need to ensure that equity is looked after and never allowed to just sit on the back burner or something that we can say, oh, it's okay, we got it. No, we always need to be addressing that, always need to be humble. And yes, enrollment is a big issue and certainly something that I as your. Of course.
Thank you, Asher. Jackie?
Yes. Uh, so, um, I, I totally agree with, uh, Mike, uh, on, uh, how enrollment affects the classes that we have. Uh, initially, when I came on the board, um, we had to cut several classes because not enough students signed up for them. And even though they were great classes, if nobody signs up. But then we found that, hey, we, we could send the teacher up instead of sending the student up. And, uh, that was helpful and, uh, a law class went up to Arlington. And, and, uh, we haven't been able to entice the people from Manchester yet, but we're hoping to. But we did get, uh, uh, Husek Falls on board with us, which was great. They filled up a lot of the slots. Um, the, the, the biggest thing though is, uh, besides enrollment is, uh, the teacher's salary. At the tech center, they get the same salary as teachers. And so when they come in and they're in industry, uh, what they have to do is to take classes in order to be, become a, a tech teacher. And so after their classes, they, you know, they still go up the ladder like teachers do. Uh, but they never make the same as some of our, our, um, upper teachers, but they have a lot of industry behind them. And many of them take like half of a salary coming on board to the tech center. So that has to change.
Thank you, Jackie.
Mm-hmm.
Niana, you're up next.
Um, I think that, uh, it's very obvious that, uh, access, um, accessibility, uh, and accountability are, are, are the biggest issues right now. Um, accountability, not just with teachers and the superintendent, but also the board itself. Um, understanding that, uh, uh, these, these issues have been handled poorly and that, uh, we need to address, um, people's discontent and, and earn back their trust uh, as well as, uh, creating an accessible place for people, uh, of all backgrounds to, to come and learn and, um, uh, create an environment of learning and listening.
Thank you, Niana. TJ?
Uh, so the biggest challenges with the school district, yeah, again, I think I'm right on the, the same pages as, as many members here, uh, as far as accessibility and enrollment go. Um, you know, we're a rural community, you know, from Woodford to Manchester can partake in the Southwest Tech Center. Uh, so accessibility through online learning, remote learning is great. Um, but to get kids back in the classroom is such an important thing to, to have as well. But if we label that as like a lab, um, versus the online, online learning, I think we could make that work. We have a kind of a dual kind of enrollment kind of thing. Uh, and another thing I just wanted, would really want to focus on is not falling behind on 21st century learning and tech. Uh, really stay up to date with some of the courses that we're offering for the community and make, get more feedback from the community. Uh, as I'm out here promoting myself for this position, uh, there are many members in Arlington, Manchester that know very little. And, uh, we can do better at that. We can do better at promoting our services and getting recommendations of how, how we can better serve the community moving forward.
Thank you all so much. We have gotten some great questions from our, in our chat. And some of them we've consolidated a little bit because they're, um, a little bit, um, similar. Um, so what we would like to do here is just open up to candidates who would like to speak about it. We won't go through each candidate, um, two or three of you, if you want to jump in. Dan, is that right?
Yeah, just volunteer, volunteer, um, where, where you feel you want to. Um, and if there's three or four, it's fine. Um, just try to give space to as many audience questions as possible.
Right. We got a lot of them to go through and, and so, um, I'll start right away. We have, um, multiple people, like I said, asked this question. Thank you for submitting this Lynn, Jen and, and others. Um, so here we go. We have a current board member that had, has caused significant harm to students of color. So much so, the football team wrote a letter admonishing this board and asking for resignation. How would you, as a potential board member, approach this matter? Who would like to step in for that?
I would. Like I said, each board member gets $1,000 a year in stipend. We need to hold people accountable. We need to hold their feet to the fire. Provided I'm lucky enough to serve as your next Southwest Tech Board Member, I hope you do the same with me. Now look, we've all said and done foolish things in our past. Although there's a difference between that and some of the things we've seen in recent months. So as a board member, you know, I want to hear from the community especially, although I believe that a vote to censor would certainly be a good start. Uh, holding a vote, holding a motion to ensure that we, um, are taking inclusivity and diversity more seriously to the point where if, uh, a, a board member, um, is harming students, that there is a pathway to have that board member recalled because we cannot have board members who are staining our community. We can ha- not have board members who are missing one, two, three meetings with impunity while receiving a thousand dollars a year in stipend? That dog don't hunt. So we really need to think about how accountability plays, not just in our school board here in the Southwest Tech, everywhere, not just Vermont. Thank you.
Thank you, Asher. Anybody else want to address that question? It looks like Mike.
Yeah, I'll just be brief. Um, I, I was certainly shocked to hear the comments. I, as, if I was a board member, I certainly would denounce them, ask for his resignation. Uh, I know they did that. It's unfortunate. I think, I believe it was the charter that held them back. So hopefully they can get that fixed and modified so that I don't want it to happen in the future. But if a board member on any other board is, is behaving like that, they have an easy way to, uh, remove them.
Thank you. We'll take one more comment. I look, looks like everybody wants to speak on this. Um, and we lost one of our, our, our candidates. So I'm not sure what happened there. Um, Anthony?
Uh, yes, I just want to reference the overall philosophy, uh, of the Southwest Tech Center. And, and that's to treat everyone respectful in, in this environment and, and, and be open to different, uh, backgrounds and, um, what people bring to the table. If someone's not representing, uh, the philosophy of the board, the goals of the board, uh, there should be some. there should be some accountability to that. And I would focus it on that more than anything else. If we're going to be on a board, you should fall in line with the philosophy and the goals of it, or maybe you should find another thing that aligns with your perspective, because this board does not, you know, fall into that category.
Thank you. So I'm going to move to a next question. I'm sorry, I'm not like, I'm just randomly picking people. It's just how my Zoom screen looks. So if I don't see you, you might chime in. Let's see, from Tina Cook, how will you work as a board member to recruit teachers? Anybody want to take that?
I'll bite. I don't have a whole lot of experience in the recruitment of teachers, although I believe that listening to those with experience matters. If a politician tells you, looks in the eye and says, I know how to do everything from A to Z, they're lying to you. I know that I don't know how to do everything, and I don't know how to do everything as well as, you know, the next person. So I'm going to go to whether it's Mike Lawler or, you know, Jim Colkeen, whoever is an authority on these issues of hiring personnel, not 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 just teachers, any faculty at the board or recommending maybe, okay, we're full here. MAU has an op an open teaching role, go there. We need to be ready to listen. I know that word's been brought up a lot, although it is one of the three pillars of my campaign, so I'll bring it up a little more. We need to be willing to listen when people say there's a teacher applying. This is, these are some of the things that you should consider when looking for a new teacher. The whole board needs to be in on that. And I will take it very seriously regardless of the experience I have prior. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamar, you look like you were interested in answering this question.
Yes, could you also repeat the question for me as well?
How will you work as a board member to recruit teachers?
Well, I think that come back to what I said earlier about having an effective role in the community. So I I think yes, our our job is to to govern the school district and, you know, to evaluate the superintendent. But shouldn't we also have a role in, you know, encouraging people to want to come to this this school? As far as teachers in the communities, so so look at the efforts that we can do to get out there and, you know, and and discuss some of the the programs that we have to offer, things like that, also taking a look at various teachers that we know throughout their various platforms and LinkedIn. I believe there's other kinds of platforms you have up there that teachers have put their applications out there. So we can look at those things. We don't just have to lead that to the superintendent to be the person who hires the staff.
Thank you, Jamar. Niana?
Yeah, I I think it's important to to consider what I believe Jackie was saying earlier about making sure that our teachers are paid well. Because that's going to encourage teachers to come and want to teach and give our students the best education. But also making sure that students want to sign up for these programs, making sure that students are enrolled in programs that these teachers are going to be teaching. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to another question. This one from Mary Jo Kawai Tech. How will you support your teachers to become more educated and prepared to teach and support all students, especially those in marginalized communities?
And we might, Asher, we might, we might have some other folks go. You've taken on the first two, so maybe have you step back and let some others step up.
Thank you. Anthony, would you like to take this one?
Sure. I'm sorry, can you repeat that real quick?
How will you support teachers to become more educated and prepared to teach and support all students, especially those in marginalized communities?
Well, you know, I would hope most teachers that come to the table, you know, bring some of those skill sets as a whole, but if not, reaching out there and seeing if we can bring trainers in that may help them kind of bridge that gap or something they may may know or may not know. And 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 go from there. Sure, it'd be great to be able to go to these communities and really get to know the individuals in these communities and and see how they communicate with each other first and foremost, because how we communicate here between us, not always how we communicate with our friends outside of here. And just being able to be able to relate and 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 make sure we bring everybody to the table that we can, yeah, really. But we got to get out there in the community to see what we can offer the community. So that's where I'm going to leave it.
Mike, please.
Yeah, I think, you know, as a teacher, you're should be constantly learning. You shouldn't ever have an end date of learning. You're always learning something new, I think, especially in a tech tech school, you know, the technology is constantly changing. I take it from Mr. Scott, who does video production now, used to work with me at Cat TV. And, you know, new cameras come out every other month, it feels like. So new technologies in that realm. But also it would equate to all the other classes as well. But I think just giving them the constant push to take these online seminars or go to these workshops and collaborate with other teachers and learn from them and hear from them and bring that knowledge back to to Southwest Tech, that kind of helps all of us, so.
Thanks. Yeah, a lot of great questions here from Tina Cook again. I'm going to skip to how can we get local businesses to utilize career development funds at the tech center? Anybody want to take that on? Go ahead, Niana.
Yeah, I mean, as far as like getting local businesses interested, there's a lot of opportunities for career building and having people who really understand the the job before they are even performing it. I I think that it would be a totally sensible thing to do, to to have local businesses involved in in training and helping people be better educated and more prepared to be the future workforce for our community.
Thank you. Anybody else want to hit that question?
Yeah, I'll jump in. I think we should make a more of an effort to go out in the community and maybe do information interviews with local businesses and figure out what they're seeing from the graduates from from our school district and what skills that these students are bringing or not bringing to the table and and going from there. In addition to that, if we develop more certification programs or that match up local businesses, they'll be looking, they'll be coming to us looking for students or recognizing they'll see that, you know, certification from the tech center and know they have the skills needed to hit the ground running for that business. Because the fact is, they helped develop that program because we went out there in the community and we found out what the needs were in advance. So that'd be my my way of looking at that.
Appreciate that. Thank you. We have another question here from Rachel Blumenthal. I thought I'd mix it up a little bit with the questions. It says, do you think a person, do you think that a person's personal views as expressed on social media are relevant to their ability and their responsibility when they take on an elected position in one in one of our educational settings? Jamar would like to take that.
Is someone waiting for me to answer?
Yes, I thought you were going to take it. Nope. I saw your hand. I'm sorry. If you do not want to, we can.
Well, well, I'll just say this. I personally personally have mixed about it. When when your views, because again, you know, I believe that we all have the right to free speech, you know, and you know, to believe in what we choose to believe and believe in God, be it God, Buddha, Allah, whatever, right? So I don't I don't see one method as being admitted to be free while other methods aren't. So for example, I may not agree with some of the things you say. But you know, I I think that we we have to be able to separate those things from a business environment. And, you know, I I guess, if you want to call it social media. When your rhetoric goes outside of social media and it affects the people around you, then it's a problem. You know, because you have the ability to employ someone, right, at their superintendent position? And you don't want to have someone who, let's say, Asian or African American or whatever their nationality be, to have the answer to you. And you've publicly put your your bigotry out there for the world to see. I don't think that's going to create an environment where people are going to want to work for you. So I think that it shouldn't there be something that's tolerated in any kind of workplace. But to say that they should also be canceled and like permanently, I'm 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 not okay with those kind of things, you know. We're all human beings. We we're all capable of saying evil and and, you know, whatever hurtful stuff to each other. But that goes back to what we said earlier about compromise and and being able to have those conversations. If I think that people on this board, on this particular board should want to have a compassion for people that are in their community, that that's number one.
Thanks, Jamar.
Thank you, Jamar. Does anybody else, real quick, want to tap on this? Niana?
Yeah, I think that it's important to to point out that in this conversation of free speech, we we always talk about canceling. But when really, we should be talking about consequences. And consequences are important in this situation because making those types of statements on social media creates a hostile work environment, especially when it's so brazenly stated openly on multiple social media pages. And also the fact that this type of rhetoric is indeed harmful and and does have an actual impact.
Thank you. Let's see. I feel like we can do the last question of from Tina Cook on the Ed2Go program. Dan, you feel feel good about that?
Yeah.
So Tina Cook has one more question here. It says, we added the online learning feature Ed2Go in 2015. How we can, how can we expand and promote the Ed2Go program and online learning? I haven't heard much from Mike, and I thought maybe you could take this on. All right.
Yes, I was going to jump in on the last question, but I feel like it was fully stated before, so I was just going to give them a thumbs up. So but yes, online learning, I think, as I said before, the silver lining of this whole pandemic has been accelerated online learning to a high degree. So it's great that we've already had that instituted in 2015, which I didn't know, which is awesome. But yeah, it, I think this is a great opportunity to have that as maybe little hubs around at the other schools in Manchester, Arlington, that students can come to that room, log in and be at a Southwest Tech class. So how we kind of work with those sending schools to figure that out or or other options, obviously, you know, the sky's the limit really with with technology and and remote learning. I feel like it it opens up so many doors. So yeah, be pretty cool.
Thank you, Mike. Asher, did you have anything to say about this question?
Please remind me really quick what the question was.
Sure. We added the the online learning feature Ed2Go in 2015. You got it?
Yes, and I know TJ wanted to speak. I'll just I'll make it brief as possible. It's very important that we address the equities surrounding online learning. And of course, my turrets aren't going to let me do it quickly. And furthermore, people with disabilities learn different ways. Kids learn different ways. So we need to be ready to address those issues for those kids with those disabilities who might not do as well with an online work learning environment. Furthermore, lots of the kids in our community come from impoverished families where they might might not even have online learning in the first place. Broadband's an issue statewide, nationwide. So we need to be thinking about, A, are the kids able to learn a level playing field with online learning as well as any other form of learning? And B, for online learning, are we able to bring in kids from poverty? And if not, how do we address that? And how do we brainstorm a real solution? Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize, Anthony or TJ. TJ, go ahead.
No, that's fine. I think everyone's kind of hitting the nail on the head here, accessibility. And I'm glad, you know, many kids have access to Chromebooks and things of that nature. Again, people with disabilities may need additional help. So just kind of keep that in mind. If Ed2Go is great, but there should be a kind of a tutor portion to that as well, where if kids need extra help or just to understand something, they can have access to tutor or some some kind of assistance right away, not waiting 24 hours or or however long. We need to just make sure we close that, we close that circle and make sure people are going to participate in Ed2Go. They have the resources they they need to get through it and and complete it successfully. So.
Great. Thank you, guys. I just want to say I I just really thoroughly enjoyed this forum. Everybody was super thoughtful in their responses. And I think that it was, we are able as voters to really make an educated vote on this coming up March 2nd, right? March 2nd. And if you have a plan to vote and you need an early absence, please call our town clerk to get a ballot sent to you as soon as possible. Dan?
That is me. Thank you so much, everyone. We all should give a virtual big thank you and clap to Mia for the amazing job she did moderating. Thank you to our six candidates who are here for all or part of the program. Also wanted to share with folks, you're a parent and you want to get more involved. I just dropped this in the chat as well. We have a Parents United to Support and Strengthen Vermont Public Schools Facebook group. That is part of the partnership between Rights and Democracy and the Vermont NEA, the teachers' union. And also, if you want to support RAD itself,